We're going to convene the meeting tonight. The Board has been in closed session for the purpose of negotiations, student residency, employment of employee, closed session minute review, and approval of November 11th, 2014, and December 1st, 2014, closed session minutes. There are six Board members present and one absent. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Next on the agenda is our public hearing for the adoption of the 2014 certificate of levy. Ellen, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bastido?
Here.
Mrs. Stufen?
Here.
Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes, here.
Dr. Harrell?
Here.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Here. And Chris Welton will give an overview of the levy. Thank you.
We have for you this evening the 2014 tax levy. And we went over this a month ago, but we'll review the tax levy. So a month ago, we went over and the Board approved the estimated tax levy. We gave notice on December 5th in the newspaper that we would have this hearing this morning, or this evening. And so this is the tax levy timeline. In January of 14, we had the 1.5% CPI came out. In November, we approved the tentative levy. Tonight, the Board will vote on the 2014 tax levy. I will be filing that levy in the counties, both Cook and DuPage County, on Monday, the 22nd. We will get the final EAV and tax extensions from the counties in late March, sometimes early April. And then the first half of taxes are billed out for June and the second half in September. The tax cap limits the overall operating tax extension. It does not cap an individual's property tax bill or property tax assessment. The tax cap limits the tax extensions for existing property to the lesser of 5% or the increase in CPI. It does not apply to new construction, and the debt service are outside of the tax cap. There has not been a CPI of 5% since the inception of the property tax extension limitation law. The highest was 4.1% in 2007, and the lowest was 0.1% in 2008. But this CPI is 1.5%, and the CPI has averaged 2.08 over the last five years and 2.38 over the last 20 years. This chart, the middle diagram, is our current situation where existing EAV is decreasing, which increases the tax rate. And these two diagrams show the inverse relationship between EAV and tax rate. As EAV was going up, the tax rate was going down, and now as EAV is going down, the tax rates are going up. But the tax rate increase does not equal the property tax bill increase. So in doing the tax levy, we know we have the 1.5% CPI, but we do not know EAV and new construction. That'll be done by the county in late March. The 2014 assessments were calculated based on sales that occurred in 2011, '12, and '13. Declining sales prompted decreasing assessments. So assessments always lag behind the marketplace. Currently, we are estimating EAV for York Township to decrease by 1.39%, and Addison Township to decrease by 3%. So overall, we're estimating a decrease in EAV at 2%. The new construction, we'll show some historical new construction here, but we're estimating new construction at $28 million for this current extension. We also levied for an additional $20 million in new construction. This additional amount provides for the possibility of underestimating new construction. But no matter what the district levies, the counties will only extend the increase allowable under the tax cap. So in this slide, we're estimating, we're showing estimated extensions and rates based on the 2% decrease in EAV and the $28 million in new construction. And it shows here that, it shows an operating increase estimate of 3%, the bond and interest estimate of 9%, and the grand total increase of 3.59%. But note, most taxpayers will not see the full 3.59% because that amount includes new construction. Most taxpayers with existing property would see a 2.24% increase, and that's on a $300,000 house, $118.42. The other thing that's interesting or new to the district is that the education fund, now with the increasing tax rates because of the decreasing EAV, our education fund levy has bumped into the tax rate ceiling of 4.000. And so therefore, we had to increase our special education allocation in order to preserve the tax extension in the education fund. So that's the first time that we've had that, where we've bumped into a rate-fund ceiling limitation. So that's why you would notice that the allocations between the different levies changed between the estimated and tonight, between last month and tonight. The totals are the same as was presented a month ago, but there are different allocations between the funds. And in March, when we get the information back from the county, we can readjust those between the funds in order to appropriately fund our different funds in our operating funds, our different levies across our operating funds. But that rate-fund ceiling made it a little different and a little more complicated this time in the education fund. And so this is the actual levy, but as I said, you know, the counties will only extend what's allowable under the tax cap. But the levy is an operating fund increase of 4.04% and a grand total increase of 4.43%. That's all I have for the hearing.
Are there any questions? Chris?
I would just like to point out that the property taxes represent 85% of our budget. The only other revenue sources we are, we have some small other local, but primarily state and federal sources, which I think is no secret, are both in shaky states. So unfortunately, this is the only reliable funding source that we have to meet the needs of our kids. And so I just wanted to point out that our governmental entity is funded primarily by property taxes, and we really don't have a lot else to rely on to fund our needs.
We're about 85% property taxes, about 5% other local, 7% state, and 3% federal. So yes, 85% property taxes.
Any other comments? Okay. I had a comment. So we see a lot of percentages here, and I wanted to reiterate what is actually going to happen for the taxpayer. So our, the CPI rose by 1.5%, and then we have our debt service. So really, those two together would add up to the 2.24% increase. So it's paying for our debts, and it's the inflation. Our expenditures are going up with inflation. We're trying to keep our revenues in line with expenditures with, as far as inflation goes. So it's, you know, it's the inflation and our debt service getting to the 2.24% increase. Thanks. I'm sorry, Margaret? Okay. Okay, are there any public comments regarding the levy? I have one blue sheet. Gilbert Fisher?
Yes, ma'am. Is this thing on? I have a very hard time.
Hearing.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Gilbert Fisher, 586 North Van Aken, Elmhurst, Illinois. I press this button, or you do it, or what? Or whatever. This is my tax bill on my house this year. There are 19 taxing bodies on my house in DuPage County. Seventeen of those taxing bodies lowered my taxes on my house. Seventeen out of 19 charges on my taxes. You know the two that did not go down this year? Only two went up. One was the city of Elmhurst, and one was Elmhurst District 205. It's amazing to me that you people cannot follow what other government agencies are doing and lowering the taxes on my house. You're here tonight, you want to raise 3% more taxes. This is ridiculous. You're in a beautiful building here that you people bought illegally. You bought it for a school, and then it turned out you couldn't use it for a school. You wasted $2 million. Then you had to spend another million dollars for what you want to use it for. And so my outlook is, if we had all the money in the world right here in this building, you would be crying for more. This is ridiculous. My house was paid for in 1989. I'm retired 16 years, and I gotta put $4,000 out of my retirement away for School District 205, and I have no idea why. I haven't had any children in your school district in over 25 years, yet I'm still paying you money for what I have no idea. Is this a communist country? I don't use your schools. Your schools do nothing for me, and yet you want more money. Seventeen government bodies lowered my taxes, and you can't. There's something wrong with you people when everybody else can lower taxes, but you can't. You need more. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment for the levy? Okay, hearing done, we'll adjourn the levy and return to the regular meeting. So now, a really great part of our meeting is the student and staff recognition. We'll start with the Illinois Art Education Association Selectee.
Yes, it's our pleasure to introduce Jan Lieben. Jan, would you come up? Linda, are you joining us?
No.
Let me, as Jan's walking up. The Illinois Art Association promotes quality education for children and adults. Professional development is done every year at an annual conference and publications, and it really provides leadership for advancement of excellence in art by providing support, direction, and advocacy for quality art education, as well as professional development for all of its members. Each year, this organization are asked to submit images of stellar artwork that was created in their classroom. All the art submissions are two-dimensional projects produced through a variety of techniques, paintings, drawings, collage, mixed media, weaving, metalwork are just a few examples. Every year, approximately 500 pieces of art from students in grades, kindergarten through high school, are sent to be juried. From that group, 40 pieces of outstanding student artwork are chosen. The judges are art teachers representing elementary, middle school, and high school. The judging process is long in labor due to the tremendous amount of high-quality work that is submitted, as you can imagine, from schools across the state of Illinois. Each of the 40 pieces are professionally mounted, and the exhibit is unveiled at a IAEA conference this November, where there is an artist's reception and awards ceremony. Following that, they travel across. And so it is our pleasure to have Jan here as our representative of one of those 40 terrific art pieces that are being recognized by her students at Sandberg Middle School this year.
Thank you. The student that was selected for the IAEA Student Art Show is Jack Rosenberg. Jack, can I have you come up, please?
You can just stand awkwardly next to me. Because I know it's fun. Jack's currently an eighth grader at Sandberg, and he's in art class right now, actually, of all the quarters. How lucky. And he, his artwork from seventh grade was actually selected for the show, but it takes so long for the artwork to be set up, and it travels around, and it takes a year. But I can tell you without a doubt that the quality of his artwork has only gone up from where it was last year. The piece that was selected was a drawing of a pop can, an aluminum pop can, and we drew it in three different stages of being crushed. It was a colored pencil drawing, and the concept was using your observational drawing skills, light and dark, shadow realism, drawing. And he did an amazing job. I just wanted to say a few words about Jack as a student in general in my art classes. Being that I do see students in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, it's really been a pleasure to have Jack in my art classes because he's the kind of student that isn't satisfied with just doing the basic, minimum kind of effort. He always tries to push beyond the very minimum and works to really challenge himself. And it's been so great to have a student like that and the leadership that he provides in the classroom. It's amazing. And then I'm also lucky because you have a younger sister that'll be coming to me, too. So we're not done. Yay. So congratulations, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a privilege to read this proclamation because this Board has always believed that the arts are very important so that we can reach every kid with every kid's needs. And sometimes kids are reached by art, sometimes kids reach out through art, and sometimes kids who do art do amazing things, and it looks like we've got one right here. So I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the mission of the Illinois Art Education Association, founded in 1935, is to provide leadership for the advancement of excellence in art education, which plays a significant and vital role in our culture, economy, excuse me, and the education of our children. And whereas each year, members are asked to submit images to be displayed at the IAEA Student Art Show of stellar artwork from students in kindergarten through high school that are created and produced through a variety of techniques in their classroom. And whereas 62 art teachers throughout the state of Illinois submitted over 725 artwork entries with only 40 pieces ultimately chosen to be on display at the IAEA conference this fall and showcased at locations throughout the state. And whereas Sandberg Middle School, seventh grade student Jackson Rosenberg's observational colored pencil drawing of an aluminum can in various states of crush was only, was one of only two artworks created by seventh graders in the collection. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to Sandberg Middle School, District 205, Jackson's family, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Jackson and his our teacher Jennifer Lieben for this outstanding achievement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause) Whether she's going around here, going in front of the table, shake all I can.
Okay, we'll move on to the staff recognition called the Shining Star. And we have many of these tonight, so Emily, can you start with the first recognition? Thanks.
As a reminder, the Shining Star recognition is kind of a new thing. This is our second time to do it, I think, and we've asked staff to nominate fellow staff members so we could recognize them here. And I'm happy to say we have quite a few tonight.
And as your name comes up, if you could come up to the podium as they're reading, and then they have the special shining star certificate for you.
Yes. And should we do the, how should we do? One at a time?
Yeah, one at a time.
Should we have everybody who's getting a shining star? Sorry to...
Obviously, I'm not in charge, so go ahead.
All right, so could we have everybody who's going to receive a shining star come on up to the front, and then we'll talk about you one at a time. All at once. Come on up. While you're lining up, I'll say, Dave, that's, my husband and I says, "Why do you ask my opinion if you're just going to do what you want to do anyway?" So sorry.
It rings familiar, believe me.
Okay, so Chris Olson, is Chris up here?
Hi.
Chris, hi, Chris. All right. Chris was, is an administrative assistant in learning and teaching. She was nominated by Jerry Sorrentino and Rene Gaston. Chris saved the day by suggesting using an administrative building color printer when Hawthorne's printer wasn't working. She was very helpful in assisting in finding the correct color printer to use, and also gathered the materials and held on to them until they could be picked up. So again, I want to say thank you to Chris, but also to the people who nominated her and recognized her great job. Is Annie up here? Annie's not here. Oh, I was going to ask her how to pronounce her last name. I think it's Perone. Is that right, Perone? Annie is a kindergarten teacher at Hawthorne, and I have a kindergartner, so I really appreciate anyone who would go into a room all day with 20 to 25 of those guys. She's nominated by Kim Nissen and Jessica Larson. Annie proactively teaches her kindergarten class, always considering social, emotional learning. She persists in developing plans over and over until her students excel. Annie works tirelessly for the young students and maintains a high level of enthusiasm. She not only teaches for today, but has a true investment for students' futures and prepares them to be lifelong learners. So that's Annie. All right, I'm going to hand this to Chris while I go. All right. Chris, go ahead.
All right, Jose Soto?
Hi.
Jose was nominated by Nicole Boyle and Elizabeth Marcellus. Jose is a custodian at Sandberg. We have here is, Jose continually goes above and beyond to help contribute in making Sandberg a great place to be, whether it is helping a teacher with the temperature in the classroom, helping students dig through garbage cans to find an ID card they accidentally threw away, which might be one of my kids, or simply asking students and staff how they are doing. There's always a smile on his face, and right now. All the hard work he does to keep the building running is truly appreciated. Thank you, Jose. And Mark Westler.
Yes, Mark, with us?
Okay. Mark is an art teacher at Hawthorne. He was nominated by Nikki Tamaru and Janet Lucero. Although teachers are not required to be on the playground before school, Mark does this every day without fail, greeting students as they line up. Parents have commented how much this means to them. In addition, the principal appreciates the presence of a certified staff member when she cannot be present. Thank you, Mark Westler.
Wait, we have so many more, and this is excellent. Erica Bradley. Erica is a third grade teacher at Emerson, and she was nominated by Kate Cortez and Anne Quebham. Erica has an energetic teaching style that engages and motivates all students. She supports and loves her students while maintaining that delicate balance between challenging them and differentiating enough to ensure that everyone succeeds. She volunteers to take the most difficult students and works in partnership with resource personnel to ensure these students have the most successful year possible. Thank you, Erica. Is Carrie Immerickson here? Excellent, great position. Carrie is a psychologist at Sandberg, and she was nominated by Linda Farenbacher and Jeff Gale. Carrie went above and beyond as Sandberg's insurance representative to make their wellness fair exceptional. She organized breakfast items, set things up in the library, supported individuals, secured items for a raffle, and took care of cleanup. Thank you, Carrie. Let me pass these out.
Oh, there you are, I'm sorry. Charlotte Kula, English teacher at Churchville, nominated by Jill Hip and Dan Coltra. On weekends, Charlotte spends hours on top of hours sending emails to colleagues about new innovative lessons and methods for reaching students. She never leaves a meeting without making sure others are heard and plans are in place with the end product in mind. She not only wants to help her reach kids, reach their potential, but she wants to educate them on how to help others better understand ideas. Elizabeth Marcellus?
Hello. Elizabeth is technology coach at Sandberg, nominated by Christina LaPena and Ed O'Connor. Elizabeth patiently works with teachers and students alike to help them become more comfortable and familiar with technology. She often takes the initiative to look for technology opportunities that will work with various curricula. She listens to the needs of both teachers and students, then guides the creative process to include unique and fun technology opportunities that enhance learning. Thank you.
And Lindsay Fiori?
Fiori.
Fiori. Okay. Lindsay's a first grade teacher at Hawthorne. She was nominated by Jessica Larson and Kim Nissen. Lindsay creates classroom structure to help her students learn and thrive. She is quick to adapt learning when necessary. Lindsay involves families to partner with their child's success in school. She demonstrates expectations to help her students social, emotional learning. Lindsay is also the champs in PBIS, representative for the entire Hawthorne school building. Congratulations, Lindsay. And Tanya Forschbeis? She is a multi-needs teacher at Sandberg. She was nominated by Linda Farenbacher and Jeff Gale. Tanya faces each day happy, supportive, encouraging, and helping each student reach his or her potential. She focuses on meeting kids' needs and providing them with opportunities to grow and learn. In addition, Tanya supports and encourages the adults who work with her in her classroom. Congratulations.
We all wanted to be involved in this great program. Okay, next is David Aradondo. Hi. Custodian at Jefferson, nominated by Nicolette Valencourt and Julianne Lindsay. David keeps the building in such excellent condition that a new student this year thought the building was brand new. His knowledge of building repair and maintenance ensures that staff can function comfortably in their jobs. In addition, David acts as a role model and mentor to the students, running with them in running club and playing soccer and basketball with them during his lunch hour. Thank you. Last award is to Barb Boslett. Oh, hi. Speech teacher at Hawthorne, nominated by Jerry Sorrentino and Jackie Kilcullen. As a veteran speech teacher, Barb is often asked to mentor new speech teachers in the district as well as any new student teachers who need training. Barb always shares her talents and knowledge willingly. This year, she brought speech brainteasers outside of her room to challenge those who pass by to stretch their brain in new ways. Thank you.
I can ask you guys to all just walk.
Again, congratulations to all of our Shining Star winners for really going above and beyond. We have one more unannounced award this evening. Chris Welton will be doing the honors.
I'd like Jason Ramsky and Audrey Reed to come up. Jason is from CHC Wellness, and Audrey Reed is our fabulous benefits coordinator. And Audrey works closely with the insurance committee on our wellness fair wellness screening event that we have every year. So with that, we'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you very much, Chris. So it's my pleasure to present this to Audrey and everyone at Elmhurst. This is the Culture of Health Award, and selected because of your commitment to creating a culture of wellness within the community. So since 2006, since we've been working with you guys, you've grown your program considerably through all the efforts and dedication to more than double the participation and the engagement. And we continue to hear stories of great experiences of people that have discovered conditions that they didn't know about because of the screening. So thank you very much, and here's the beautiful award.
I'll accept this on behalf of the insurance committee and all of the other employees who have worked so hard and participate in our wellness. Thank you.
Any public comments tonight? Okay. Moving on to superintendent's communication, Freedom of Information Act requests.
We received three Freedom of Information requests since our last meeting. One requested a list of athletes and clubs at York High School, which was granted. We had another request on closing records for debt insurance for the past 30 years, which we denied, and one request for job descriptions, salary, and benefits for non-certified staff, which was granted.
Any comments?
Our next item is Chris Welton will be taking the podium again, and he will be reviewing the annual audit review for the Board of Education this evening and for the public.
We have the 2013-14 Independent Auditors Report. This report, the bound 109-page document, went, we went over it in extensive detail in the finance committee, so tonight we're just going to do a small review of it. This first slide, the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Every year, our audit is submitted for, to the Association of School Business Officials, where it is reviewed, reviewed by a group of accountants, auditors, business managers to review it, to make sure it's at the top of the financial reporting standards. And last year's audit received this award, and this year we will be submitting it again. I think we already put it in the mail. But Helen Perez is our, is our HR and finance analyst. She deserves the recognition for this. She does a lot of work on the audit. She is the lead point person for the auditors because they ask for a ton of documents, they test everything, and Helen Perez puts all of it together for the auditors. So this is the, the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. On page one of the audit is the Independent Auditor's Report, where they give their opinion. This is a clean opinion for our annual audit report. This is page 18 of the audit report, where it shows the statement of revenues expenditures and changes in fund balances. Overall, it shows here that our expenditures and other financing uses were greater than our revenues and other financing sources by $2,734,000. Oh, I'm sorry, $2,767,767,918. I need my glasses fixed here. So, so about 2.8 million. And that reduced our fund balances from the $54 billion to $51 million. But, but this shows our cash and investment balances were higher this year than last year. So, so the difference really had to do with accrual entries made by the auditors. Because our internal financials are accounted for on a cash basis, but the audit is, is, they use the accrual basis of accounting. This is, on page 40 is a footnote. This is brought up every year, so I wanted to make sure that we just pointed it out in the presentation, the TRS employer on behalf payments. So the, for the year ended June 30th, 14, the state of Illinois contributions were based on 35.41% of credible earnings. And that is $18,951,637 in pension contributions that the state of Illinois paid directly to TRS. And so that percentage is up from 28% to 24.9% the year before that. Factors bearing on the district's future, this is on page 13 of the audit. At first, we're talking about what we've talked about earlier, that we're 85% funded by property tax and we're limited to CPI increases. Then we talk about the state of Illinois, state and federal funding is not reliable. It's proven to be not reliable, and there's potential for a pension cost shift to the local school district in the future. And, and our expenditures are more than 75% made up of staffing, and staffing increases are driven by our enrollment growth and also the expanded educational program to meet the needs of students. Another future, concern for the future is the Affordable Care Act. We already are paying fees through our premiums for the Affordable Care Act. In addition, there's the potential for the Cadillac tax to kick in in 2018, and also there's a possibility that we'll have to pick up more employees that are currently not covered by insurance, but, but employees like substitutes or other part-time employees may have to be covered with health insurance benefits similar to our full-time employees in the future. Also, the, the expanding use of technology in, in the delivery of instruction will require additional resources. And then in this last paragraph, we talk about our long-term facility plan, which is really a long-term maintenance plan where we make prudent decisions to maintain our facilities, and we annually put about $1.5 billion into, towards maintaining our buildings with roofs and parking lots and other maintenance-type items. Masonry is another one, tuck pointing that we do, and this is to just keep our, our buildings maintained. And then the last slide I have, this is the management letter where the auditors point out things that we can improve on, and they talk about the unauthorized inter-fund loan. That's because in May, our IMRF fund had a negative cash balance. We should have that corrected this year, but the auditors pointed that out. The other thing that they pointed out was for future, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board will be issuing Statement 68, and, and this has to do with recording in, in our financial statements, the unfunded liability for the pension plans in the government-wide financial statement. So that's coming next year. So that's really what I had tonight related to the audit. So I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions?
Just, just a couple of things to clarify. Thank you, Chris. That was well distilled. It was only 100 and some odd pages that you got down to eight slides. I'm impressed. The, the accrual, the accrual change in layman's terms is, is a, for instance, five-state payments this past year, for our, for our cash-based financials, we recognize all five in that revenue number. Actually, the, for accrual basis, we accrue four every year, right, Chris?
Right.
So for accrual basis, it treats those as if we got them and it books them as a receivable. So when we receive those this year under accrual, it doesn't, it doesn't hit our, our revenue. So what they did was they took it out of our revenue, thereby lowering our revenue. So that's what, that's what he means. It's a timing shift. It's, it's based on the period that the revenue was recognized versus, not when it was collected.
The first of those five payments was recorded in the 2013 audit as revenue. So it reduced the revenue.
Yeah. And so despite the significant negative number, I mean, I think the, the district maintained a cash balance that grew to $2 million bucks, or a little over $2 million, which was about 2% of the budget. So, you know, prudent, prudent growth in, in cash, I mean, plus or minus within the ballpark of where we manage to, given that we don't have any room to miss, to miss by. So I, I think we want to paint a picture that, that, you know, unless somebody look at this and say, we lost $5 million, we didn't, we didn't lose $5 million, at $3 million, it, on an accrual basis, we did, and over the long term, that all evens out. But this year, from a cash collection standpoint, we actually collected a little more cash than break even. And the other thing I'd like to point out is, when Chris talks about the on behalf contribution, that's the Illinois state taxpayer contributes 35% of creditable earnings into the pension plan on behalf of our teachers. That is what they're talking about in the pension shift. So when, when they talk about potentially shifting pension liability to school districts, that $19 million annually, at the rate that it was accrued this year, is the amount they're talking about shifting onto our income statement. And so that represents about 17% of our budget that it would blow a hole in, in addition to the four to five million that a Senate Bill 16 might end up taking out of our budget too. So those are things when Chris talks about stability of funding from the state and some of the, some of the things that we're concerned with and some of the reasons why we need to have some cushion on our fund balance, so that if these things happen to us, we have some runway to adjust to those. Because if we didn't have fund balance when those things might happen, we would have to go to the only tool we have, which is to slash teachers and increase class size. And so this gives us the luxury, or the, luxury is a wrong word, the ability to have some runway to think about how we address this in a very measured fashion without resorting to kind of draconian cuts the day there are now, the day that, that one of these things has passed. And then the last piece, just to give you a sense of what that 19 million funds, next year, you will find that our pro-rata share of that TRS pension liability, which is created by the state, we, we did not, we do not determine that, we do not determine funding on that that's funded out of the, by the income taxpayer, by the state, and their failure to fund that has created a, a hole, an unfunded pension liability, which is now going to be parceled out to the various school districts. So we are going to, I think what they're trying to tell us is this is what we're on the hook for, ultimately, when they shift the pension liability to the school districts. So that transparency, I mean, I think is welcome because it helps frame the conversation and the magnitude of, of the issue we have to deal with. But I just want everybody to, to be prepared for what that number's going to look like.
I just want to clarify that. Did it, did you say that's federal funding, though, that doesn't get paid, so then the state pays it? I thought, can you go back that last slide? I thought it said federal, no, so yeah. Not paid from federal funds? And the district, so the state pays the 35%?
Yes.
Okay.
And Chris, why did the percentage rise so much from, you know, 28, 24 to 35?
I just think the, the state's lack of funding over the years is, and, I, I mean, I don't have all the actuarial numbers, but the, the pension is increasing, the pension liability is increasing faster than the revenues being funding, funding the pensions.
Yeah, Chris, a portion of that is the amount that we're, that the state is supposed to contribute every year to keep up with the liability for that year.
Yes.
And then a portion of that is to try to help dig out of the hole that they were in. And so I'm not sure what the normal, the annual, I think Chris was saying, he didn't have the calculation, what the annual rate is if you were to just contribute every year like you're supposed to, versus how much of that is catch-up. But as you can see, over the last three years, 24, 28, 35, it's, it's a significant number just annually.
Anything else?
The next item is a PMA preliminary five-year projection. This is Chris again, along with PMA representatives to review a five-year.
We have Gary Lundquist here from PMA to present our five-year projections.
Good evening, everyone. There you go. Hi there. I'm pitching in for Doreen Lindeman. I am a retired business manager, just trying to help out. So I think your last set of projections were done in January of this year, and I believe what you have now is an update, and this update would include at minimum your, your, the two big items would be the budget for the current fiscal year and audit results, since we use a lot of base data from current year, from current year budgets. So basically, what you have is a projection says, well, based on certain assumption, 30 So basically, what you have is a projection says, well, based on certain assumption, certain things may happen in five years. And every year, you do an annual budget. And that annual budget says, "We think this is going to happen this year." And then when you have an audit, the audit says, "Well, here's what did happen." So moving, if we go, we're on page two? Okay, good. Some of this was mentioned earlier, that you see how weighted the district is here in property taxes. This is not at all unusual for a community of this type. I think you've budgeted only three-state categorical payments this year. Is that correct? Which is conservative, but not unreasonable. And what we're talking about is the interaction of a whole number of assumptions. And many of these assumptions, as you start going out into future years, you can't really say if they're right or not. We're only going to know after the fact. But the key is, are they reasonable? Do they have some basis either in history or what we know is going out, for example, in the legislature? And our revenue assumptions with the property taxes, which is number three, please, you have, if you look at 2014, there's your 1.5%, which is the CPI, which drives most of your levy. And then you're estimating 1.6%. We'll know in January what that number is for sure. And then in January, you'll be updating these projections to include some other data points that you all are working on, staffing and what have you. And in using an out-years, I see you've used 1.8%. This is the same as in January of 2014, and certainly a conservative number, but again, a reasonable number. Some of the other districts I've been to have used numbers, 2, I think 2.2 is too high, but 1.8 is certainly a reasonable figure, and I think certainly strengthens your projections. Moving to page four, new EAV, equalized assessed valuation. And if we look at 2014, it was about $28 million. We're going to about $30 million in 2015. You see a little bit of a spike there in 2016. I understand a TIF comes off in that year. So hopefully, you'll get a little bump in the EAV beyond what you might normally expect from year to year. Being conservative again in '17 and '18, in 2019, TIF number three comes off. And you're expecting to pick up perhaps another, an additional $8 million over approximately $27 million, which is your normal annual figure. Moving on to page five, revenue assumptions in your property taxes. You see this is very conservative. The EAV change overall, you've had some significant reductions over past year as have other districts. Some have been cataclysmic. I was at a place a couple of weeks ago, and their last EAV dropped 21%. 21% one year. That's a catastrophe of biblical proportion. Anyway, it's not like that here. That's a good thing. So this is a trend, I believe, that's been replicated since your January projections. Moving to page six, your total equalized assessed valuation. You see a slight, a small increase in the blue lines in the future years of the projection cycle. And I think that it looks to me like it's attributable almost entirely to new property, as we looked at in a previous slide. But if you look at the amount in 2020, $2.134 billion is still less than that of 2010. So it's going to take a long time to recover from the economic reverses of that period of time. Moving on to page seven, revenue assumptions and general state aid. I believe that you have no change in the formula. You're still on the alternate formula. There's not going to be a great deal of change in state funding for reasons that we're all wondering about. We now have a new governor. We have new budgetary challenges. So by keeping that pretty flat, I think that seems reasonable. Funded at 89%, and we're going out to 85% in future years, which is the same as in January of 2014. Now, moving into page eight, enrollment and staffing. I think you have, your enrollment is going up. I believe in January, if you go out to 2020, the number was 8,400. The number now looks like it's gone up a bit more. And I think, Chris, you did that internally. Is that correct? Internal?
We had an external demographer come in and project enrollment.
Okay. Thank you. So with that increase in enrollment, going into the next page, nine, you're going to have to deal with that in your enrollment and staffing. And I understand there's certainly going to be a great deal of conversation at the board level and the administration level in the next several weeks regarding that as we go into the 15, 16 budget year. So you're looking at, in 2014, backing up one year, the number was 627.7. You're up to 649.7. And in future years, you're looking at two factors affecting FTE here, certified staff, and that's your increasing enrollments and the types of enrollments in special ed, depending on the needs of those children as they come to you, and of course, the general enrollment increase. So those numbers drive the enrollment and staffing as we speak this evening going forward. As I understand, in January, there was a consideration of four FTE for special ed and ELL. This is three per year, three additional staff. If we go to page 10, we're looking at expenditures by object. And certainly not surprisingly, salaries and benefits are driving your budget. And this is in the, your operating funds, which are listed down at the bottom there. As I understand, if anyone were to have the January projections in front of them, that this table in January was all funds. So there's going to be some differences in the pie chart from January because this is operating funds. So debt service, for example, in your TIFs are not in here in this table that you see in front of you. Your expenditure assumptions for personnel, you have a collective bargaining agreement through this year, which you'll be dealing with. Your future years are subject to negotiation, certainly. But what I think is recognized here is that about, we're using a CPI factor, which we've said is about 1.8 going forward, to the staff salary base. So it certainly seems to be reasonable. It certainly seems to be tied back to the growth in the CPI, which would tie back to your growth in taxes, all things considered. So it's a placeholder at this moment. I'm sure there's going to be an enormous amount of effort in refining these figures in the months to come, particularly during negotiations. But nevertheless, as a placeholder, you're tying back to CPI. And that's probably a good thing. You have a health benefit increase, I guess yourself find it, right, Chris?
Yeah.
Okay. And you mentioned the Cadillac taxes starting in 2018. That's assuming the Affordable Healthcare Act remains in its current configuration. And when I was speaking with Ms. Lindeman this morning, she indicated, for example, that the amount of this could be estimated in 2018 at about $40,000, paying the feds, $200,000 in '19, and approximately $440,000 in 2020. That's a lot of money. So I also believe that we have not included the TRS cost shift at this time, just to recognize that, just so we know, keep that out there in case that needs to be considered at a future point. Other expenditure assumptions on 12, non-personnel expenditures, average 2%. I understand they're about 1 to 4. And tuition costs for your outside placements for special ed, you're showing a 10% annual factor. And the textbooks, energy, technology, and capital projects are part of your district's long-term plan, which is going to be put in here. For example, if you now look at page 13, please, if you look at FY16, the second column, and if you look down under expenditures, you see other expenditures. And that figure is about a little over $26 million. You follow me there? Everybody got that? And you see that percentage is about 17%, which is very much unlike all the percentage increases in other years and in the other categories. And that's because of the text, technology, and textbook replacements, which were planned to be undertaken in this current fiscal year. That number is larger. It shows a greater increase than in the prior year. So all in all, you have a budgeted surplus this year, 216. If we make all things being equal, as we say today, if things interact with each other as we're suggesting here, that would give you a deficit in 2016. Now, that's certainly not a foregone conclusion and clearly not an acceptable one to you. But you see that number then. You have a couple more red years in '17 and '18. You turn around in '19, and then '20 is driven back into a projected deficit. And you might suggest that has quite a bit to do with Cadillac taxes, among other things. Your enrollment will continue to increase. I understand that the staffing is being considered to maintain a teacher-student ratio that's similar to what you've had, you've been operating under at the current time. So all these issues certainly will be on the table. Someone told me a long time ago, "If you want to know what's going on, follow the money." Salaries and benefits, that's where the money goes. And increasingly, to special ed. So if you go to page 14, we see that your fund balances in your operating funds, again, from 2015 declined to about $33 million, a still substantive figure, I might add, compared to a whole lot of other districts out there. Of some concern will be, again, on a projected basis, and a number of years out into the future would be the lower line, which is your low cash balance. And you see that number turns red in 2020. Essentially, this is where this timing issue that Chris was talking about earlier comes into place. Let's say at the end of May, you reach your low point in cash because in June, taxes start to come in. So it's a transitory thing. It's not endemic, but it is something to consider at that time. All things being equal, then, you'd want to have, I'm just suggesting out loud, a deficit out there so that you could still have cash to pay your bills. But anyway, this is not a serious thing, but it's something that the model yields, so it's to be recognized. And then if you go on 15, page 15, this is all funds, including debt service, your capital projects. And the capital projects is TIF, and you have some transfers from operation and maintenance fund in a couple of years in there. So that's shown in the previous one, but not here because this is already, this is all funds together. And again, you see your fund balances, projected year-end balances towards the bottom line there, decrease, but again, to a significant extent, what that does that's different from your operating funds is that you spend your capital funds. You get them, you put them in the bank, and then you draw down on them. So in the initial year, you get them, it looks like a big revenue. Then it goes to fund balance. And then in the subsequent years, you don't have new revenue, so that looks like a deficit. But in fact, it's not. You're just drawing down for known purposes that you've all planned for. So you get to page 16, and this is just a graphic presentation of what we just talked about and the fund balances in all funds. And on page 17, again, a lot of work to be done, a lot of it on the expenditure side. We're going to keep our eyes on the state as we always do. Whenever the legislature's in session, I've never yet found them to be of any use to the schools. We talked about Senate Bill 16. Well, it's, I don't know if it's dead. It's, they wouldn't put the bullet in the heart. It's moribund for now, but may come back. So we have to keep your eyes peeled because this district is a prime potential loser. So in a sense, you lose enough money to really destabilize your operations. And the receiving districts, by the time they get the money, it's not enough to put them back on their feet. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, we'll be back in January, towards the end of January, I believe, to give you another update.
Any comments?
Thank you.
Are there any comments, questions?
I'll start again. So if you recall, this is a process. We just finished the fiscal year 15 budget. We approved the actual budget when we got the updated numbers, I think it was October, Chris, where we approved the final budget for September. So now we're starting the cycle all over again. And it starts with a very high-level baseline set of projections on the five-year plan, from which then we make staffing decisions and investment decisions and things like that. So this is the beginning of the fiscal '16 process. This is a maintenance budget. I mean, it's set up as a baseline that basically you're drawing a line from where we were before. As you heard, you know, we're not, there's no new investment contemplated. We're paying our maintenance on our facilities. One of the things that this shows, I think you had made a comment, that our operating funds were in surplus. That was before the maintenance that we have to spend to upkeep our building. The reason that we put both funds together and looked at all funds was because our capital comes out of a different fund, and it's a real expense, and we have to spend that expense. So I mean, I think we were budgeting for a deficit this year when we started out, recognizing that we have the fund balance to cover that deficit. This does fund some of the investments we made last year. We committed to fund for at least three years, but this funds it for the foreseeable future. And so I just wanted to point out, there's no change in class size. There's no kind of incremental one time in any of this. This is a baseline from which to start the discussion. You can see the shape of the chart. You know, one thing I'd also like to point out, once again, 85% of our revenues come from property taxes. A number of other governmental bodies receive fee income, sales tax revenue, things that have recovered as the recession has lifted and the economy starts to recover. We don't. So I know DuPage County, you know, had a flat levy. And they have a number of other sources of revenue. And as a taxpayer, I'm thankful that they had a flat levy. But we don't have that benefit of having, I want to say, a diversified set of revenues. That said, we have a much more stable set of revenues. So we thank the local taxpayer for that. The assumptions around this are based upon basically kind of a muddle-through economy. A 1.6, 1.8 inflation rate is consistent with mediocre growth. The new growth that we have in our town, if you looked at trend, long-term, new growth is somewhere in the low to mid-20% range, or I mean, $20 million a year range. We're budgeting at 27-ish, recognizing some of the growth that we have in town. So again, I think it's kind of a baseline, kind of average, you know, nothing fancy kind of budget that we're starting with here. And we haven't budgeted for, you know, any kind of, whether Senate Bill 16 is dead, but whether the concepts come back in a different format, whether there's a pension shift, those are all things that you'd strangle yourself if you tried to budget for right now. So I think those are things that when those happen, I think our strategy has been to monitor our fund balance to give us runway to address those and then have the conversation when it happens. Because as you saw by the magnitude of what that might mean, I don't think there's any way you could cut your way into surviving that. So we will see that when it comes. This is kind of that baseline from which to start with, and we'll continue to add precision to it as we know what our staffing assumptions are going to be, as we know better. In the fall, we'll get enrollment. We'll talk about technology, budget, and things like that. Those will all start to get more defined, but this is our first cut at it. So, I just wanted to set the context.
Just at our next meeting, we will bring forward to the board our discretionary staffing, what we look like in nondiscretionary, I should say, nondiscretionary staffing projections. And that'll put more detail into the PMA projection. And then that'll be followed by discretionary staffing recommendations, depending on what the funding looks like at that point.
Okay. Moving on to bond market and options update. Thanks. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thanks. Thanks, Emily. An update on our bond sale in December, and then going forward with the plan here in January. So, oops, did I go the wrong way? I did. Sorry. Okay. The market's still great. I mean, this week, again, interest rates have come down. I know the stock market's not doing well, but that means the bond market is rallying, which it is. Our 10-year Treasury's down to 206. It's just...
That's a long day, isn't it?
Yeah. It's very volatile, and strong demand for bonds. So, just going back to our deal in December, as you recall, our strategy of refunding the various portions of the 2005 and 2006 A-bonds that are available to be refunded, we did the current refunding on a bank-qualified basis in December, so we could get those lower rates that banks are willing to give issuers who sell less than 10 million of total debt in a year. So, sorry for all the numbers here, but you probably can see it on your screen a little better. But this is our comparable pricing analysis. And we started at one level, the second column from the left, and ended up at the final proposed pricing, where our yields to the investor ranged from 0.28 percent to 1.47 percent. And then we look at the spread over the municipal market data index on that, and compare it with where we started on our pre-pricing call the day before. We came down a little bit in the 2015 year. And then look at other bonds in the market at the same time. Interestingly, the city of Almhurst was in the market the day before. Now, they're rated AAA, one notch higher than you are. You're AA+. So, their rates were a little lower in certain maturities, higher in other maturities, but they should be lower, given that a little bit stronger bond rating. And then the next page shows what happened in deals the following week. And so, we had come off kind of a low point in the second week of October, and rates were coming up. And as we look at these other comparables, even like the Buffalo Grove Park District, which is also AAA, our yields are lower than theirs, as well as Carey 26, which is a AA-rated issuer. And then the one that's got the exact same rating as you, Palatine, Village of Palatine, AA+. You can see our yields are a bit lower than those. So, anyway, good comparisons, or they're very similar, I should say, on the Palatine. Very, very similar. The savings, though, is 859,000, about 860,000 over time. Notice that there's very little annual savings in the first five years, and all the savings are in that last year, 2020. That is consistent with the strategy that we talked about earlier this year of accelerating the repayment of the bonds under your current repayment schedule to get the most possible savings. So, as you can see, we're literally shortening up your debt a little bit by taking all the savings in that last year. And when we look at the present value savings, 812,000 divided by the Paramount refunded, we get that net PV savings ratio of 9.78 percent. And the minimum is 3 percent, so we're well over that kind of benchmark. So, going forward, the debt restructuring plan that we discussed planned on accelerating the debt service within the current payments. We're not increasing people's debt payments versus the original schedule, but we're going to try to pay off principal early to generate more interest savings, and eventually retire your debt almost a year earlier, when all is said and done. So, that's the way we maximize the present value savings with this accelerated structure. And we also talked about timing earlier this fall, in that we would do the bank-qualified issue in 2014, come back here in January of '15, and refund the remaining '05s and as much of the '06 A-bonds that we could on an advanced basis. So, as we go into calendar 2015, these bonds are not going to be bank-qualified. They're going to be higher than that. And this first issue is going to be close to $30 million. Okay? So, that's going to price. We'd like to schedule it very early in January. Couple reasons for that. January 1, a lot of bonds mature. They have January 1 maturity, so there are a lot of supply out there looking to be reinvested in municipal bonds. We expect there to be a number of bonds, mostly for refunding purposes, coming nationwide in January. So, our goal is to get your issue out there early. You'll see on the schedule in a few slides, we're looking at coming back, like, January 6 or 7, right after people are back. So, the beauty of the authorizing resolution that you're looking at tonight is that it gives us flexibility if something happens between now and then that would tell us, "Gosh, let's wait." But we think you'll have the best opportunity to gain the most savings by being in the ready position and ready to go right after the first of the year. So, page seven, and again, sorry it's small on the screen, but it looks at the savings that we're anticipating from the January 2015 refunding. Again, you can see we're paying off the debt sooner. We're refunding about 43.3 million of principal and interest and replacing it with 37.3 million. You can see, if you look in the last year, there's 10,640, we're taking out, and replacing it with 4,606. So, that's, again, a result of accelerating paying off debt early. The savings from this issue is expected to be over $6 million, or 16 percent of the bonds refunded. Then we're going to come back in the fall of 2015 and refund the remaining 2006 A-bonds that can only be refunded at the call date. So, those, because they refunded bonds in the past, we have to wait till the call date, which is actually Jan. 1 of '16, so we can hit that in fall of '15, 90 days before that call date. And then the last issue, which is out there a ways, is fall of 2016 refunding, which would take advantage of refunding the 2007 A-bonds that have a call date of Jan. 1, 2017. So, if rates stay the same for the next three years, which is unlikely, but, you know, we're looking at savings of over $11 million. But obviously, we'll update this for you as we get, time goes on. This is just a graphic. The top is the shape of the debt, principal and interest, in the light blue on referendum debt, and in the dark blue on non-referendum bonds, like life-safety bonds. And you can see that's paid off in 2025. The bottom is what it'll look like after this restructuring. And you can see that the bars, if you look at the top, the bars in '23 and '24 are much, much lower than they are on the top graph. And then just to the schedule, tonight, you've got the parameters bond resolution, an escrow resolution for the refunding of the 2005 and 2006 A-refundable bonds. If that's approved tonight, we will have a call bright and early tomorrow morning with Standard and Poor's, and get the bond rating re-upped for this issue. Have our due diligence call this week as well. And we would like to mail, even though it's before the holidays, get the OS on the street so investors know it's coming and are ready for it that first week of January. So, we say week of January 5 is the pricing with the approval of the board delegates. If you recall, the parameters resolution authorizes board president, chairman of finance, and assistant superintendent for business to give the final approval of the pricing of the bonds. And then we'd be closing in early February. Any questions?
We talked about this in the finance committee meeting, and I just, correct me if I'm wrong on anything, but we discussed the two methods, negotiated bond sale and competitive bond sale, the two methods by which any underwriter may purchase municipal bonds from a school district for the re-offering to the public. And I think our most recent bond issues have been negotiated, but as good fiduciaries, we just wanted to kind of review it, revisit it, make sure that that was still the right decision for us. And I think because of our strong credit rating, we talked about how we would be a good, well, we would be a good contender for competitive bond sale, but that the negotiated bond sale offers us some flexibility with the timing of the market. So, I just wanted to mention that to the people who weren't on the finance committee at that meeting, and just let you know that we came to the decision to do the negotiated bond deal again. So, is that right?
Thanks, Emily. Very well said.
We recommended that to the board.
And it's really just staying the course of what we've discussed the last several years. Chris?
So, I just wanted to, from a context perspective, we started this program in 2012 with refinancing our debt at the interest rates where they are. In 2012, we did an issue that had a net present value savings of around $800,000. In '13, there was another 875,000. In '12, there was 490,000. In '13, 875. But the number there, if you add all those up, we saved about $2.2 million for the property taxpayer before. And that doesn't go into our pocket. That's a direct reduction in the levy. Now, the way we've done this, we're paying off our mortgage faster, so that levy reduction will happen in the later years, when we get out of our debt quicker. With this program, we're projected to save close to $6 million if the rates hang in there now for January. And then if we can maintain these rates for the next 18 to 21 months or so, the total program would yield savings to the property taxpayer of approximately $14 million over the life of the bonds. So, I just wanted to just kind of give some magnitude of the savings that our plan is generating for the property taxpayer.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. We're moving on to board meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the November 11th or December 1st meeting minutes? Okay. And those minutes approve as presented, or approved as presented? Board committee reports. Margaret?
All right. So, we had the curriculum, I'm sorry, the teaching...
I need to change the title of the minutes.
Yes. The teaching and learning.
Learning and teaching.
Learning and teaching. LT. I don't want to say that. Learning and teaching, yeah, committee meeting on December 3, Wednesday. And there were a variety of different topics that we covered. The first topic that we covered, we had gotten a lot of feedback from parents and the community on some of the changes that were going on in our math curriculum. We took all that feedback, the administration, the deans, the teachers, they took all of that feedback, and really worked to try to find a process that addressed all the needs of the students. And I think we came to a really good spot, where we were looking at, first, our current eighth-grade students, and how we could address the needs that they would have, providing an additional option for them to either take enriched geometry or advanced algebra for this year only. And then we put a plan in place that spans the entire process, going all the way back to, I think it was, second or third grade, and looking at how we would planfully determine what students and what classes they were taking. So, that was the math pathway. We also talked about a kids' assessment program. Now, this kids' assessment program is a new tool that was developed by the Illinois kindergarten, I'm sorry, was developed by the state of Illinois that would affect all Illinois kindergartens. And they were looking at essentially 47 criteria that these kindergarten teachers would have to observe. Obviously, the committee expressed some concerns on how they would be able to make all these additional observations, report on the student population, teach and observe at the same time, and in addition, that paperwork to be completed. So, those were some of the concerns of the committee. The great news is there was a work group that is in place that's looking at what's done already, what's new, you know, and how to manage that logistical issue that's in place.
Absolutely. So, was that optional, or was that a mandate?
Thank you for that question. That was a mandate, or a regulation is the new term we are using?
We're calling them regulation, another unfunded regulation.
That was a regulation by the state of Illinois. Thank you.
But it is not optional.
It is not optional. It is not optional. It's just how we can manage to work through that. Thank you for that point. There was also a park update, and the new news on the park update, the big piece, was that initially, there was quite a bit of concern that this park would be affected. Our 11th-grade students are juniors, and those students already have so much testing, including the ACT. The state notified us sometime a couple of weeks ago that we would have the option of taking on the ninth grade doing the park test, and the district decided that we would move forward with the ninth grade, which will alleviate some of that additional pressure for our juniors in taking those tests. We also got an update on the data warehouse. Charles outlined, you know, exactly what would be coming into the data warehouse and the deployment process. And finally, we ended with KPIs. We had a KPI discussion, given some of the changes that we would be having in, one, going to the park, how that would affect some of our criteria for the MAP testing. We looked at, you know, what types, how that will affect our current KPIs, and what changes do we need to consider. Obviously, no decisions were made, just discussions on those changes that would work. Michelle, would you add something, please?
I think you did a great job summarizing the meeting. Any questions?
I just had a comment about the key performance indicators. It seems like it's going to be an ongoing discussion on, you know, something like the achievement gap. I mean, we had a really good discussion on what is right for our district. How do we look at the achievement gap? Because it hasn't really worked to find out for ELL, for example, with the current KPI. We really can't tell how those kids are growing. If you, you know, pass a test, then you're not in that population anymore. We don't know what happened to those students that have moved on out of the ELL program. So, we're discussing ways to, you know, really track our student growth for these different populations. And I think the administration's going to come back with some more recommendations on how to do that. You know best how to figure out, you know, what's the best for our students in our district.
Yeah. And January 7 is our next learning and teaching committee meeting, where we will have an update on our ELL program. And at that point, Arianna Leonard will be able to go deeper into, Charles and Arianna and I have looked at how to really assess...
Because it hasn't really worked to find out for ELL, for example, with the current KPI. We really can't tell how those kids are growing. If you, you know, pass a test, then you're not in that population anymore. We don't know what happened to those students that have moved on out of the ELL program. So we're discussing ways to, you know, really track our student growth for these different populations. And I think the administration's going to come back with some more recommendations on how to do that. You know best how to figure out, you know, what's the best for our students in our district.
Yeah, and January 7th is our next Learning and Teaching Committee Meeting, where we will have an update on our ELL program. And at that point, Arianna Leonard will be able to go deeper into, Charles and Arianna and I have looked at how to really assess ELL students and their growth. It's very hard to base it on an English test when they're English language learners. And so, we are making growth with our students, but really can't be doing it with an English test. And as Shannon said, once they are exited from the program, they're no longer ELL, so we can't even track, you know, watch their growth after that part. So we have some ideas that we'll be bringing forward on January 7th.
Can I just add to that a little bit? And I think I probably said this before sitting here, that student growth is not measured by skin color or economic status. It's measured by where they were when we got them and what value we added to them when they leave us. And so, I would just throw that out there one more time, which is, I would love to make sure that when we measure student growth, it's kind of agnostic to all of that. It's a kid's a kid. And, you know, where, how do we make that C student, a B student, a D student, an A student? Or, I mean, how do we level, I mean, how do we pull everybody up? And so, you know, we've cut subgroups based upon economic status and skin color and things like that because that's the way the law had been written. But from our standpoint, I'd be more interested in knowing where those kids are when they come in and, you know, what their student growth is between now and when they leave us. So whether it's, you know, quartiles or deciles based upon explore, or, you know, whatever metric you want to use to try to start a baseline from that. So then you track them. Whether they're in an ELL program or not is somewhat irrelevant at that point. You will have the data to assess an ELL program because there are special needs to those folks. But overall, how are we helping those kids? Because, you know, ELL kids don't necessarily, I mean, it has this negative connotation to it that it's an, you know, you've got an ELL kid, they're in the ELL program, well, they must not be as smart as the other kids. Well, there's some smart ELL kids, too. So, let's make sure that we're not getting branded based upon that kind of stuff. So I just, I'll get off the soapbox now, but that.
No, and I think that's exactly our point, too. It's, what we're trying to say, though, is using a MAP point where it is English to English, the assessment is not fair for our ELL students. Right? So it has nothing to do with these kids are not growing because we know they are, but we want to have an assessment that really shows how well they're growing. And we are looking at the access, which is the one, you know, the assessment that all of our ELL students take, which is much more in alignment of where an ELL student starts and how they grow. So, I agree with you completely.
One other thing, too, to go along, Chris, what you're saying, when, you know, it doesn't matter, you know, the background of the student, we want to understand the intelligence of our students. So that was the other thing we talked about, is administering an intelligence test at certain levels. You mentioned second, I think, second grade, fifth grade, seventh grade. And that goes beyond language. So you can really determine a student's intelligence and, you know, place them in the appropriate classes. So we haven't done that in a long time in District 205. Okay, you're up next. Finance?
Haven't we covered all the stuff that I've done in committee before? We'll try to make this really quick. Well, there was, there's two sets of minutes, so I'll briefly, the one from a month ago. The only one, the only thing I'll highlight from there is the demographer enrollment projections. I don't know if, Chris, we might have talked about this since then, but the enrollment, the actual enrollment was slightly less than that was projected. I think it was off by about 1.2% or something like that. And when we had the question earlier about the numbers that we're using for the PMA projections, I think that's the Modified Welton Method that takes the original projections from Cropper and then updates those and rolls through for our kindergarten and what we actually experienced. It's a patented method, I think, that. So at any rate, that's just the update. So I think when we talked about what we use when our projections, it's a combination of what Cropper did, adjusted for the actual that we achieved this particular year. In December, we met last week, November Monthly Financial Report. I think we were doing okay, I guess is probably the best way to say that, Chris. And it's not, it's no great shakes, but we're somewhat around plan. There were various reasons why some things were overplanned, overbudget, and some underbudget. We talked a little bit about electricity, which is a significant account that is overbudget, but it has something to do with timing and some rate, some rate contracts that we entered into to smooth out the expenses so that that overbudget will reverse out. So, I just want to point that out. The Self Insurance Fund, though, is something that I think we all need to be aware of, that we've had some significantly bad performance, bad performance, negative, adverse performance. We've had a lot of large claims lately. And that fund balances evaporated. You know, it's down to about what, I don't like the word, it's gone down significantly. We thought we had significant cushion in it. It is down to about the minimum, about where we'd like it to be. So I think it's something we need to keep an eye on, given the kind of adverse performance. Yeah, you're right. And then the last thing that I'll highlight is a demographer discussion. In our last Finance Committee, we had a conversation with Cropper, a follow-up conversation. As you recall, we hired them in large part because they had two parts to their proposal. One was the actual demographic work, the other was helping us interpret and use it as we evaluate potential scenarios for delivering education in Elmhurst. And the next steps in that are twofold. One is to be more granular around a capacity calculation for our buildings. We use a square foot average in our facilities at a glance report. It's a square foot per kid, and that's what we determine with capacity, just because it would be very time-consuming to try to do that at a very granular level. It gives the public a great idea of approximately where capacity is. But if we're going into more granular planning, we need an updated and a more defined capacity calculation, which Cropper can help us with the methodology on. We will probably be executing most of that in-house, but it, you know, it has to do with getting down to actually how much classroom, how much common area do we have, how do the kids fit in the building? So that's the first step. And then against that capacity calculation and the demographic projections, we can ask various questions around potential scenarios ahead of community engagement that we've been talking about having around the future of education in Elmhurst. And so, I think what we've done is, we're going to explore updating our capacity calculations, and we're going to assemble, I think, the scenarios that we would like to at least talk about. These aren't, these aren't things that are, you know, ready for execution. They're, it's an intellectual exercise for us to talk about how we might deliver education in the future in Elmhurst. And that would be in preparation for a discussion with the community, which would give us some tangible things to talk about to the community, not a wide-open kind of, hey, how do you want to do education next, you know, in the next 10 years? It's, you know, here's some ideas based upon some leading thinking, you know, both as an industry, but then as a lot of work that Dave's been doing over the last couple of years with his staff and the administration around some of the things that we can do. You know, again, we keep talking about being a lighthouse district and what are things that we can look at for that. So, I just wanted to update everyone on the fact that we're having those discussions with Cropper on how to potentially help us with that. The next step in that, in addition to capacity, would be then to assemble the list of potential scenarios and then bring that to the Board Table to talk about what we wanted them to help us with. So, any questions?
Did I hear you say that the demographics study is off by one or 1%? This was completed last spring. I mean, is that, is there something that, that seems significant for such a recent document? Am I mistaken about?
Chris, when he presented to us and he proposed, he had said that his, he gave us a kind of a range, and it was 2% typically was what he would be within? So I think it was within the margin of kind of error that he had told us that his, typically his projections would have potentially? I don't know, Chris, if you.
He definitely talked about if any, if he erred, he erred on the high side, and which is the case. The actual enrollment came in less than what he projected. Particularly, I thought, the ninth grade came in lower. And I talked to him a little bit about our verification of residence process, you know, changed this year. And he, so we, he used projections based on historical and practice and what we were doing. And then we changed our residents so that that impacted. And our ninth grade is, you know, was projected to increase 100, and it increased 60. There, you know, there were, but I'm not defending him, I'm just explaining, you know, that was one thing that he said. But, so, the numbers came in, I think he projected it to increase, and they came in slightly, I think 25 students less than last year.
You mentioned the facilities at a glance, and I think the Board members all got a copy of that. And isn't that going to be available for the public soon on the website? Is that right?
It is. It is posted on the website at this time, and I put some other additional copies out in the hallway tonight.
Okay, good, thank you.
And I want to give Kathy Schrader and Frank Shu a lot of credit for a lot of work that went into the facilities at a glance. And I think it's a great resource. It has lots of great information in it.
I agree, yeah, it's very nice.
I have a question. When, you know, last year, we anticipated a large class at York, and then it, you know, if it's 60, but we added staff based on the larger number. So, you know, how do you?
So therefore, class size would be lower this year than last year based on that scenario that you just described. We added more staff, double digits there at York, and the enrollment didn't come in, so we should be seeing lower class sizes there at York.
While we're talking about the residency requirement, I just think it's worth repeating that we've heard from the community that, you know, they really do want to verify that all the students that we're educating live in Elmhurst, and we've taken that seriously. So this was a new thing this year, that all incoming ninth graders had to verify their residency. And we do think it impacted the numbers that some kids, maybe who weren't living in the district, didn't show up. So I just think it's worth repeating. We've put a lot of effort and money into that because, as Board members and community representatives, we heard from the community that that's something that people really take seriously and want us to look into, so.
Okay, the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? John?
I'd like to remove Item E, Approval of Revised Policy Number 7, Colon, 190, Student Discipline, which is on for first reading.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, Items A, B, C, and D.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? No? No. You're right, you didn't pull it. Okay, so I guess we need a roll call vote. Thanks.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That motion passes. Item E, Approval of Revised Policy 7, Colon, 190. I need a motion?
Make the motion and amend.
I move that the Board of Education, except as a first reading, a revised policy 7, Colon, 190, Student Discipline, which when adopted, will become a part of Section 7, Students.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, now for discussion.
I'd like to move to amend that item. Just wanted to take a little shot at tweaking the language a bit. Instead of using, possessing, distributing, purchasing, soliciting, or selling, I'd like it to read using, possessing, distributing, purchasing, or selling. Or soliciting to sell or attempting to distribute. Just has a little more clarity in the sort of things, and I think it aligns tighter with the regulation that Dave provided.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, soliciting to sell or attempting to distribute?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion around that?
Give me a second.
The only question that I have is, should we have it for all of them, not just three? Is it appropriate for one and two? I mean.
I talked to Margaret about this earlier, and I think this one is pretty clear and like to keep it going. It's something that, I think, Dave, you checked with, did you check with legal counsel on this?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we should get this going. Margaret appropriately raised the use of the word soliciting in another provision, and I suggested that, you know, the Policy Committee examine the issue entirely. Look at wherever the word solicit should be dropped in, in this section. Get a chance to talk about it, see what we think, get some input from the attorney, and proceed with that. If that can catch up to this and overlap it and be merged with it, great. But I wouldn't want to slow down this change while we're undertaking that process.
And we need a voice vote for this.
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That motion passes. Okay, Superintendent's Agenda Action Items.
No, now you have to, we need a vote on the amended motion. That was a motion to amend the motion. Now we need, isn't this fun?
Okay. I need a motion to approve the amended policy.
For first reading.
For the first reading.
For first reading.
Right. Okay, I need a motion. We're going to vote, another voice vote.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Okay, now that motion passes. Okay, Superintendent's Agenda Action Items. Want to start with the levy? We went, this is for approval of resolution for the 2014 Certificate of Levy.
I think we have talked about this previously. Unless there's further questions, I would recommend the Board make a motion to approve.
Okay, John, go ahead.
I move that the Board, excuse me. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the 2014 Certificate of Levy.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That is, moving on, Approval of Resolution to Instruct the County Clerk How to Apportion 2014 Tax Levy Extension Reductions. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to instruct the County Clerk how to apportion 2014 Tax Levy Extension Reductions.
I second.
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That is approved. Item C, Approval of Resolution for the Bond.
Anyone want to do it?
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to read this. It's Item C and.
I'm hot now, just let me go.
Okay, go ahead.
I can do something, can't I? I've moved that the Board of Education approve the. I've moved that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed 31,500,000 general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2015, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, and for the levy of a direct annual tax efficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the execution of a bond purchasing, purchase agreement with William Blair &amp; Company in connection with the sale of said bonds.
I second.
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Item D.
I'll, I'll finish the suite while I'm at it. That, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of general obligation refunding bond, refunding school bonds, Series 2015.
I second.
At any time, if there's discussions, if there's any more discussion, please, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Aye.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Okay, item E, Approval to Employ Legal Counsel. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the employment of Terry E. Engler, Cynthia M. Bastin, and Alan T. Straga. Engler, Bastin, and Straga is legal counsel.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Maybe we could just have a little statement, Dave, on the, on the record, just to tell what that's about.
Yeah, for the past several years, we have used the firm Straga-Houser, and primarily the attorney in that firm, Terry Engler, for many of our legal questions related to special education. Recently, we were informed that Ms. Engler and others have established a new law firm, Engler, Bastin, and Straga, and we would like, because we are pleased with the service and the recommendations we have from that legal firm, we would like to continue with that. And so, tonight, we are recommending that, that legal firm be added to our list of legal counsels that the board approved.
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Item F, Approval of Donation.
Yes, this evening, Lincoln PTA has generously offered to donate in the amount not to exceed $2,500. And the donation is to fund classroom online subscriptions to learningaz.com and classroom online subscription to raskids.com. These are subscription to differentiate literature for supporting reading development in the media centers, and we would recommend the approval.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Lincoln School PTA in the amount of, amount of $2,2,500. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy Number 8:80, Gifts to the District.
Right. Is it not to exceed?
I'll- I'm sorry. In an amount not to exceed, should I start over?
I'll, I'll second that motion as corrected.
Okay. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Yes, the final approval is a donation from Edison PTA. There are two parts to this donation. One is to donate wireless synchronous analog clocks to the building. The other part is water bottle fillers to the water fountains at Edison. We would recommend that the Board of Education approve in the amount of eight, $1,860, the no-touch activated water bottle refilling stations. The first part of that, though, with the wireless analog clocks, we would like, we recommend the board not approve that, acceptance of the donation at this time. We would like time to take this through our Facilities and Operations Department to review the recommendation and the donation from the PTA, and make sure that is something that we can support in the district, and we just haven't had time to do that. So, again, tonight, we would recommend the approval of the activated water bottle refilling stations, but not to approve the first part, the synchronized clocks.
Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from Edison School PTA in the amount of $1,860. Such donation to be accepted in accordance with Policy Number 8:80, Gifts to the District.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Karen. Any discussion?
Again, thanks to the Edison School PTA for their thoughtfulness, and we'll wait to hear about the other one.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Okay, action on closed session item, student residency. We, the board did not discuss the student residency, so there's no action to be taken for that item. Board communications. Are there any board communications that we have not already talked about? Okay. Upcoming meetings, December 18th, Thursday, Board Improvement Committee. We're going to, going to be discussing our community engagement plan. And then, January 7th, Learning and Teaching Committee. January 13th, Board of Education meeting. January 20th, Finance Committee. And January 27th, Board of Education meeting.